All right, at 6 o'clock, I'll call this public hearing to order. I'll read from the notice, but we are here today to talk about Mount Holly's proposed town plan. Pursuant to 24 VSA 4384, the Mount Holly Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM on November 15, 2023, at the Mount Holly Town Office and via Zoom. The purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed Mount Holly town plan. The purpose of the plan is to articulate community goals with respect to planning for land use and public services in compliance with state planning goals. All areas within the town of Mount Holly are affected. If you don't have them already, copies of the town plan and our fact sheet are available, I believe, on the table in the back. And for those of you on Zoom, if you don't have it already, the town plan is available on the town website under the Planning Commission link, and then again under Town Plan. I'll ask those of you on Zoom, when we get to the point where we're taking public comments, to utilize the raise hand feature and we can recognize you in turn. If you don't know how to use that, or you can't find it, you might be able to, just wave your hands, I guess, or you can send a note maybe to Peter and he can assist you in the comment section. I'm going to start out really quickly, hopefully. Oh, yes, again, thank you all for coming tonight. It's good to have all of you here and to have the participation of the community. That is an essential part of the planning process. So I'm going to quickly read from our fact sheet, and forgive me if you've already read it and are familiar with it, but I think it does kind of lay the foundation for what we're doing. Why do we need a town plan? A town plan is a vision for growth that reflects the collective values and goals of the town residents. Purpose of the proposed plan is to provide clear written standards for Mount Holly's orderly development, allowing for economic growth, the provision of community services, and recreational and cultural opportunities while also preserving the town's distinctly rural character and appearance. It is intended to be used positively to guide the direction of growth and development in an economically feasible and environmentally appropriate way. Town plans play an especially critical role in communities like ours that have no zoning. In the absence of zoning, the state has Act 250 jurisdiction over commercial development on any lot larger than one acre. And the town plan has no role in town proceedings, in Act 250 proceedings, if it has no town plan. In other words, the town plan allows the town to have a say in the state permitting process. In addition, the state limits the authority of towns that do not plan. For example, towns without current plans may not adopt a capital improvement program or levy impact fees, nor may they adopt or amend any bylaws such as subdivision or other land use regulations. The town plan also has a vital role in the town's success in obtaining funding through government and private grant programs. In fact, towns that do not have a plan are ineligible for certain state grant programs. Even if eligible, the town's success in obtaining grants, both public and private, is directly tied to whether the grant would further well-articulated goals identified in the town's plan. Because grant funding is critically necessary to meet Mount Holly's many infrastructure needs, a town plan is essential. Finally, a town plan is required for Belmont to retain its village center designation, which is due for renewal by April 2024. The benefits of the designation include priority consideration for state grants, eligibility for neighborhood development areas, and a variety of tax credits for revitalization and improvements. These incentives are an important factor in, among other things, attracting new businesses and vitality to the community and meeting the land use goals. In 2020, the Select Board identified the need to update the town plan and instructed the Planning Commission to begin the process. Several reasons were identified for this, but an important one was that the Rutland Region RRPC had made clear that the current plan adopted in 2018 did not actually comply with state requirements. The problem deepened with the state's adoption of Act 47 this year, which added new requirements for town plans. Importantly, the 2018 plan is also too ambiguous, lacking both the specificity and clarity of purpose that courts have held are necessary for the town's interests to be taken into account in Act 250 proceedings. That's also known as the JAM-Golf decision. The updated plan strengthened policy statements will increase the likelihood that the state will take those interests into account when evaluating proposed commercial development on lands in excess of one acre. For example, policy statements that say X or Y should be done, as the 2018 plan says, are routinely disregarded by the state as too ambiguous and lacking in decisiveness. The state will pay attention to our policies only if they say X or Y shall be done. In addition, we have been told by the state that the current plan is not sufficient to support renewal of Belmont's village center designation. In contrast, the state's Department of Housing and Community Development has informed us that the updated plan does meet all of the state's requirements. Importantly, the updated plan includes an expanded economic development section. The plan seeks to encourage people to live year-round in Mount Holly by promoting a vibrant economic environment through increased housing, improved infrastructure, and diverse and engaging recreation, recreational entertainment, and cultural activities. At the same time, the plan seeks to preserve that which makes the town special by protecting its natural beauty and rural character. I think I'll allow you to read the rest of it yourselves rather than belabor it, but I think that's kind of where we started. We were asked to do this update, and we have spent the last three years working on it. And the first thing I'd like to do, actually, we're, I think, somehow required to do, is are there any official representatives present from other towns, other adjacent municipalities? All right, they've all been invited tonight. They are all given notice, and they have an opportunity to submit comment both tonight and through the mail or email. Are there any representatives from the state or the Regional Planning Commission present? I don't see any? Are there any non-Mount Holly residents and/or landowners present? People from other towns present? All right, very good. Everybody is a Mount Holly resident or landowner, and that means we'd like to hear from you. So I think unless there's anything else from the board, I think we can open it up to the floor for comment.
Can I have one other question?
Yep.
What, how can we subsequently provide input rather than tonight?
Great question. So there may be not enough time to get through all the comments tonight, and you may have very detailed comments and suggestions. Sending those an email is the best approach, even annotating the draft, sending your handwritten notes, scan them in. You can drop them off tonight. You can leave them with us. You can leave them in the town office tomorrow in the Planning Commission office. I think we'd like to get those together by the end of the week, if possible, so that we can start incorporating all of those suggestions into a new draft. I guess a moment, too, about the next steps for this process. We'll hopefully be, with any luck, making all of you happy. That's perhaps a very unlikely scenario, but we're going to do our best to accommodate everybody and put the best interests of the town first. The Select Board has an opportunity to have a public hearing next, so we will be adopting a revised version after tonight, probably in the next couple of weeks, and forwarding that to the Select Board. And at their choosing, they will have a hearing on that draft. And they may make changes, and those would come back to us, and we'd have to write up the impact of those changes. And at that point, the Select Board has the opportunity to adopt it. So that's where we are.
I don't know which name it is, a Select Board member.
And we do have a Select Board member in attendance, I believe only one. Thank you for coming. And if you have any thoughts on the process, I'd be happy if you wanted to share them. Just let me know, it could be now or later. Okay, does that answer your question? Okay, great. Any other questions before we get started, just on the general approach or logistics?
When does this happen?
Well, I suppose it depends on how you look at it. There is a deadline in terms of the rules and how long there is between the hearing and a decision. I don't have that in front of me, but it's quite generous. We have a lot of, the Select Board has a lot of time to act. The deadline we've been operating under is the Belmont Village designation expires on April 1st of this coming year. It will take a little bit of time to produce a new, a renewal application. And a prerequisite to that approval is an approved town plan that meets the state's requirements. This plan has already been sort of vetted by the state to meet that requirement, but it has to be duly adopted by the town and the Regional Planning Commission before that can happen, so.
I would suggest that we ask people to state your name when you make comments and keep your comments on point.
Great, should we get started?
Do I have to say it on both accounts?
No. Well, you didn't state your name, but.
All right, we left one to go first. I'll recognize Dennis, if you could say your name, please?
Yes, Dennis Deverum. And I'll apologize because I probably should have been looking at this a little bit sooner because I did get some things I'd like to, you know, provide you guys information through an email. I won't take up time now. One being that Ludlow Mountain is Ludlow Mountain, even though it's Okemo, scary in Okemo State Forest, the state has always recognized it as Ludlow Mountain. You mentioned it as Okemo Mountain. And the water coming out of Star Lake until 1911, and you recommend, talk about the mills that were being run by the water, coming out of Star Lake, it came out of Jackson's Pond. So, and little things like that, that, you know, that I can catch. And I see a town plan, 40 years ago on the Planning Commission, I see a town plan as a information, providing guidance, giving some background information and stuff. So I see an awful lot of things that I'm concerned about, and I'm going to talk about some of them, obviously. So using the word "shall" versus "should" or "will," after 12 years on government operations in Mount Peary, when we were talked for half a day with lobbyist lawyers, legislative lawyers, and court officials, because the courts had to interpret and apply what we were doing, we didn't use the word "shall" quite so frequently in a document that is not zoning. In zoning, I could see, and I'm just providing input, that I could see a lot of the "shall," but there's a lot of "shall's" here, and I think, you know, that's a real concern for me, there's so many "shall's" and stuff. And one of them is no development over 2,500 feet. Well, if a person is bottom mountaintop, on top of a hill in Mount Holly, and he owns it prior to this taking effect, and his appraisal, his assessment, property project, has to do with a view and a location and stuff like that, which increases his value, I can assure you, he is going to put his house up there if he wants to. And so I think that, you know, that's one of the areas, using the word "shall" a lot. So Cavendish doesn't have zoning. So about six years ago, they tried to put a quarry in down there. I'm just going to give a couple of examples. An out-of-state investor wanted to put a quarry there, they don't have zoning, and they came up in arms. They didn't want the noise, they didn't want the trucks, they didn't want everything else. And because they didn't have, local people didn't buy into it, it kind of went away because the state was starting to make noise about the same type things. Over 45 years ago, the animal farm was going to be located on 155 on the Mount Holly-Weston Line, and that out-of-state investor was going to put exotic animals in. We didn't have zoning and stuff. So a lot of people were concerned about it, and they came out of the woodwork. And by the time they saw the local opposition and the people were talking to the state, the guy withdrew his plans and sold the property and moved on and stuff. So between subdivision and the state and stuff that we can rely on for towns that don't have zoning, that there certainly are oppositions without that. A friend of mine was involved with zoning in Manchester 40 years ago told me that developers and business people like certainty. Well, with zoning, a developer knows exactly what he has to do. When you don't have zoning, they don't know exactly what's going to happen and how it's going to go. And a lot of times, I mean, I'm concerned about the lack of zoning at times, that we've been open to several things that could have happened, and it hasn't. But when I see the example of the animal farm in Cavendish, I think, you know, that there's enough people in this town, you know, I trust, and they're concerned and have good ideas and good opinions, I don't think most of them, most things would fly and stuff. But I have a lot of concerns about, I mean, I didn't talk about all these "shall's" and stuff, you're familiar with them. I don't think it needs that kind of weight to be judged as, because we haven't had that many "shall's" in there, and we've been fine with our weighing in on things that are happening and stuff in other towns, too. So I'm thinking a lot less. I have concerns about a lot of other areas and stuff, the local option tax figure. So the rooms and meals tax is 9% now, and the town of Mount Holly would have to vote for 1%. So if, we're talking rooms and meals. There's no restaurants in town, well, there's a store that might serve food and stuff, but there's not many restaurants. I'm sure there's a few bed and breakfasts and other people renting rooms and stuff. Let's say it generated $100,000. The state takes it, the state treasurer, the property taxes, takes that money in, and for running it, they keep, I think this percentage was 70%, and return to the town 30%. I doubt if we would generate $100,000 in tax revenue and get $30,000 back a year. I'm not saying it's not there, because other towns have done it, Killington, Ludlow, there's a lot of them doing it, but they're mostly lighter cities where there's lots of rooms and meals and sales tax to be generated. So I think I'm going to end it, and I will provide some of those things in writing, just little things that I caught that I, you know, spelled out, one section had a, use road, arrow, AD a lot, and then in one section on the Crown Point Road, I saw RD a lot. And I, you know, I, those little things, I'd like to see, but I'll let other people speak.
All right, thank you.
But I have lots of concerns, and I would recommend that in this form, that our Select Board should not adopt it with this strong language. I don't think it's necessary.
Right. So just quickly on that, the 1% option tax is a 1% that the town will get all of. The two projects that you mentioned were both Act 250 proceedings, and without a plan that has this kind of language, the town would have zero standing, and that is especially true after the JAM-Golf decision. The decision in Cavendish is especially relevant because that's the one that decided that it doesn't have to be a development of ground disturbance more than acre, it's any lot greater than an acre. So that leaves, it's basically 99% of lots in this town would be under state jurisdiction, and without a town plan that gives us any standing, we have no voice. And that's sort of what, that's why we were sort of directed to do this. But I'll, we'll move on to the next comment, if there are others. Who would like to go next?
I have a comment relative to what Dennis was saying, and I suspect he would disagree with me, but the town plan back in the 1970s was critical for this town. Those of you who were there here then recall something called Wildlife Wonderland, which was a game farm to be put in over on Route 155 by a veterinarian from Manchester. He was going to have all sorts of African and assorted other wild animals, I won't go into all the details. One of the critical things, and I was on the Planning Commission at that point, and asked him about, because he said he anticipated 300,000 people visiting it during the summer months, roughly four months, June, July, August, September, in 100,000 cars, three people per car. He was asked whether, or I asked him, whether he would put signage up that would direct people off of the interstate through Ludlow over 100 and up 155, coming up the other side of Route 7 from Manchester, London Dairy, in that way. No, he said he wouldn't. He would direct them over 103 and up through Belmont, over Maple Hill Road, the Straight Road, and so forth. I'm not quite sure what roughly 850 cars a day would do going through Belmont. If we did not have a town plan in effect at that point that said things like "shall" and so forth, we well might have ended up with that. The District Commission gave this guy a permit. It went to the State Board and it was turned down. In fact, the State Board held a hearing up in what was then the community center, Town Hall, and they and the witnesses created their own traffic jam in Belmont. In any event, it was turned down, it was also, it was appealed to the State Supreme Court and shot down at that point also. But the critical thing is that the state, the District Commission, the State Board, they're all going to look at that town plan and decide whether this is what the town of Mount Holly wants. And so it's critical that if we want certain things for certain, then we better be saying "shall." It's not a, it's not a zoning ordinance by any stretch of the imagination. The only time it really takes precedent is when there is something that triggers an Act 250 hearing.
That's great, thank you.
I might add, I have read this over, made assorted notes, and I think it's a very good job.
Thank you. Peter has also sent us an email with some suggestions I'll be sharing with the board later. I think there are many of those we can address.
Yeah, we believe her, Mount Holly. And then you state the 2018 plan was too ambiguous, lacking both in specificity and clarity of purpose. Think we ought to learn from that, that we have to be as specific as possible, and the word "shall" is the word you use, "should you," "shall use it." I also like to thank the Planning Commission for meeting twice monthly for three years. That's a huge amount of time for, you know, volunteer people, and I'd like to thank them for all their efforts in this. This is a huge deal.
Thank you for those comments. Fra?
Francis Devine, using a cool name. Yeah, again, I back up what Tati said, one is commend you guys for the work you did for the last three years. It was great. I read through the documents, a very clear document. It's interesting because the word "should" and "shall" jumped out at me, too, and I saw a lot of "should," you know, which to me was much more aspirational than, you know, putting in firm, firm rulings and governing kind of directions for the board. And to me, it just seems this document does just barely hit the minimum required by the state for a state plan to give us standing if we ever do have a Act 250 situation. I mean, I would almost say, I mean, without going into the details, "shall" could be used a lot more frequently within the document, make it a little stronger.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Don Eaton. I've lived in town about 40 years, and applaud you, I was on the Planning Commission back in the 90s and worked on the town plan, and it's a lot of work. I applaud you for that. Takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And there's a lot of good in there about what you say about us being able to put pressure on that 250 hearing, that sort of thing, preserving the rural character of the town, providing better services and recreation, and looking for ways to increase housing. I mean, state's already looking into providing grants for AD units, trying to eliminate single-family housing, basically, zoning, that sort of thing, single-family housing. So that's going to help. But there are a couple of things in here. Okemo's always been the eyesore for everybody over here on this side, not everybody, but we're looking at, if you throw out a little scare thing of Okemo owns, at least it's 578 acres up in the state forest, we can't, we shall not let them expand. Summit Lodge is part of, in Mount Holly. I'm not sure where you got your information, but the town line does not include the Summit Lodge. The town listers include a little bit of snowmaking pipe and a couple of lifts, but no buildings. So, you know, when I see something like that, when you include a major million, a couple million dollar building, and say it's in the town when it's not, it makes me wonder what else is not right in the, in your little, in the town plan. So it makes me question.
Yeah.
And the lister, I've got the lister card right here if you want to see it. And we wrote a letter, the listers wrote a letter to Okemo back in 2019 when Vail took over and gave them a list of the tops of the lifts, Tower 15, 16, the snowmaking pipe, and we assess them at 350,000. We make a 12 or 1300 bucks a year off Okemo. But I don't personally, I'm a gear, I worked up there years and years ago, I don't think we should say, "you shall not expand," because 40 years from now, town might want a private lift for the, for the property owners going up the backside of Okemo. There used to be a lift flag right to Branch Brook Road at one time, that was right down there, that was in 1984. And the town, but, you know, Okemo is like the big bad bear with the development coming over the mountain. Now, I asked a lister how many new houses we had in town this year. We had one mobile home, and we got four houses under construction. We got 900 and something dwellings, so I don't see major development happening. I mean, do you? I mean, where is it? This, you know, it's like, it's coming, but where is it? I mean, if we had 10 houses a year for the next 10 years, that'd be 100 houses, we'd have, what, a 12% increase in our tax base of number dwellings? That wouldn't be outrageous, would it? So I don't think putting a damper on developers. And you do put a lot of "shall's" in there, the town "shall" require that proposals for development must address the impacts of fire, emergency, and other public safety services and roads. That's Act 250. That's right in Act 250. You do a veiled attempt at subdivision by saying an envelope, you know, subdivision regulation. You have to have a bill that "shall" have a building envelope before you even do your subdivision. You're pushing too much into it. Subdivision, don't put it in there, don't put veil zoning in there, or you'll get the townspeople against you. We need a town plan. A lot of this is good, but I'm going to dwell on one other thing real quick. Money, money, money. Grants, it's all grants, it's all this money, it's tax money. We know where it's coming from. It's like, we're talking about, let's beg for money, let's get all these grants, let's do all these things, let's build our town government bigger, let's hire a grant specialist, when we could hire one as we need them, not full-time or anything. I mean, I think Bridget's probably good at it, probably been paid for it, but I mean, town manager? Give me a break. We really don't need a town manager. That's going to cost more than the rescue squad, the money we're putting on a rescue squad. We need things like that more important than we need a bigger government, a bigger Select Board, and more money spent, brought into the town just to spend it, and have to hire somebody to run the town to do it. You know, the "shall's," I mean, I know why we need some "shall's," and, I mean, I've dealt with attorneys enough, I've seen somebody up there as attorney to get all the "shall's" in there, but I think you ought to trim it down a little bit and forget thinking we need to expand our government town. And I'll try to put something in writing if I can.
Appreciate it. Well, just really quickly on the one point, because there's too much there to respond to, but the town plan maps we use, the town line between Mount Holly and Ludlow is based on the information that is in both the Mount Holly tax maps and the Ludlow tax maps. They currently agree on the town line, and they show things as we've described.
Well, the Agency Natural Resources map, you can look at them online, they're not right, I mean, they're off.
They're not right, that's right.
But if we do, let's But if, if we do, let's tax them. Let's get the tax, jump right, let's town, let's jump right off.
That's a question we have, it's sort of out of our wheelhouse. We don't tax in this board, so that's outside our purview. So, and then just real quickly, it was our intention, whether or not we've achieved it, to actually strengthen the ability for people to do new development, do, do development, particularly certain types of housing. Because we've recognized that there is a shortage of certain kinds of housing in town and we've actually tried to tune the plan to make that more likely to occur. And part of the interest in putting things in the plan was to make, as you've identified, grants much more easy to come by. And that is in attempt to, to offload some of the burden from individual town taxpayers. We just can't run municipalities based on local tax revenue, local, local property taxes alone. That just doesn't work. And we already have, I think most people agree, property taxes that are fairly high. There's no way, for example, we could pave our roads without grants. And we actually have a select board member right now who is at complete maximum in terms of his ability to write grants. And it's very much of a challenge for the town. It seems to me it's a financial vulnerability for the town at the moment. Did you have a follow-up?
Just one quick little thing.
Yeah.
Minor. We shall supply money for the historical society. I'm a lifetime member. Town has no business supplying money to a private organization, foundation, or the, you know, library maybe, but not shall for the Mount Holly Historical Society. It's in there.
Okay. All right, thank you. And if you have other things, if you want to send an email, that would be great. Okay, anybody else? Why don't we try somebody on Zoom? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to wave their hand or, oh, Allison? You're muted at the moment.
There. Can you hear me? I would just like to speak up in favor of the plan and echo the, the appreciation for all the work that has to have gone into this. And also just to stress that the word shall, well, it sounds binding. It's certainly not. Some development coming 40 years down the road is not gonna be under this plan for sure. And so I think it's really important that we use the language that we can, where we can have a say, the townspeople can have a say in what happens. Otherwise, the state regulations are gonna take priority and we have no power. So I think it's really important to remember that it's, none of this is binding. It's not a regulation. It's just necessary for us to be able to get, get the grants we need to keep the town running and attract the kind of businesses and new residents of all ages, hopefully some younger residents, full-time residents, small businesses. I think this plan is essential if we really want the town to grow in a sensible way and yet still be a beautiful place with farmlands and forests and all. I'd just like to say my father worked on, he was working on town plans in the 70s and 80s and was on the select board. And it's such a different, it's a different thing now. We're not, you know, zoning isn't really the issue now. The issue is all the new state laws, particularly Act 250, that we, we just have to be able to have a say. So I totally support the plan.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go to the back for a second if you don't mind. Pete?
Oh, Philip Pleisgol. When I look at these things, I, I like the town plan in general. I think we should also be thinking about the next generation. Most of the people in this town, myself included, we aren't gonna be here 30 years from now, you know, most likely. We should be thinking a lot about who we want to attract here. Who is, and how does the town plan help attract the next generation of young vibrant people to want to live here? Because it's not for us. It's really for them.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Do you have any thoughts on what might do that or how you, or things you've noticed in the plan that work either for or against it?
I think in general, it's a plan, right? I, I, I don't know all the plan, but the idea is that someone is taking the care and thinking about, what is this place I want to live in? And buy a house here and raise my children here? Is it just all up in the air for chance? And this says, no, it's not. You may not agree with all the details, but that someone cares, right? I don't, um, it's difficult to say because for some people it may be schools, some people it's other things. But I think for most people, it's a feeling. The same feeling I had 20 years ago when I bought a house here. I, I don't know how to put that in words exactly, but I knew it was different. In a positive way.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Leeber. I think it's great to think of the future generations and I think it's important. I also want to give some thought to this generation. You know, we didn't move here for a house. We moved here for a community. And we'd like to really stay in this community. And I, I think some of the town plan provisions for letting people who live here stay here is an important part of what I think is important in this town plan. As well as looking in the future and finding ways to bring people in. So I think that's an essential part. I don't want to leave. I'm sure a lot of people that are getting on don't want to leave either. So that's a big part of what I'd like to see.
Agree, Dave. I'm not in opposition to that at all, because I want to live here for the rest of my days too.
Is that Steven?
Steve Michelle Belmont. Rather than speaking generalizations, I'll try to go to some four or five specific points I've noticed. One is on page 12 where you talk about the town primarily through subdivision review, shall do something. That, I suspect, is an overreach on the planning commission's authority as to, in essence, enforce cluster housing. Because the goal, it seems to imply that by reviewing, you're going to try and tell a subdivision, subdivision, subdivider, I'll get the word right, yeah, to cluster housing within the subdivisions together so as to encourage agriculture. I'm all for that. However, I feel the way it's phrased, you're overstepping your authority as a planning commission by taking on, let's call it a responsibility or an authority you don't have. The other thing on page 13, it says the 25-year-old subdivision regulations are increasingly out of date and continues on. But you really don't get any specifics as to what makes them out of date and why the town should rewrite them. It just seems a little strange. Just a general comment, which I thought I said I wouldn't do, but I am, is you seem to include the village plan throughout this and basically have said it was adopted in one of the sessions. And it really is, the way I keep telling people, it's more of an aspirational plan that a committee has come up with for it and not necessarily for the Belmont Village by itself. Some of the items in there, I think in general, should be expanded throughout of Mount Holly. On page 18, once I find it, you talk about, basically on the bottom of the page, the last sentence, new development shall not be allowed in these areas under the flood zone and river corridor. Yet in a, on page 51, where you talk about the flood zone, river corridor, you said prohibit or limit development. There, I'd have to go back and reread the ordinance. But if it complies with certain specifics or certain types of development are allowed within the river corridor or flood zone. I'd have to go back and look for specifics. So I tend to think that statement itself needs to be rewritten to be more along the one you're using on page 51. Going to page 24. And then I'll shut up. You talk about, I'm trying to find it here, an impact fee. Again, I tend to suspect you're overstepping the authority as to why we need one. And I'm not sure anywhere in there, at least I couldn't, I didn't feel I saw anything in there where you justify the need for a, a fee. To, because all it says is you need, you know, we should establish a fee towards the protection or restoration of town-owned open space lands, forest parks, or recreation areas. And the town, as you say, somewhere else owns minimal amount of land. We're talking about the beach and let's say the school and the municipal area. And that is, that is the town land. Unless you're trying to say where you're talking about they are, you're encouraging them to buy a state, a town forest. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So just sort of to the general, some of the general points there. One thing I do want to point out that many of you may not be aware of is there's an implementation section of the plan. So a plan is, is a plan. There's, it's not really something that we can overstep the authority. There is no authority directly derived from the plan. The plan has to be implemented by the select board, generally speaking. So if there are to be, if there are recommendations in here or things that the select board may see as useful tools, it would be entirely up to the select board to adopt them. And impact fees, revision of the subdivision, bylaw, et cetera, would all be among them. So they aren't just because they are present in the plan, something that the town gets. We're that simple. There's a, a long process for each one of these recommendations. And again, it's only if the select board sees them as beneficial. So that applies to, you know, like I said, revision of subdivision. And I think the first question was, yeah, whether or not the, a revised subdivision bylaw would include anything relating to cluster housing or assessing impact fees depending on the size of the development. That's all, those are all questions for select board, either current or future select board.
Related question. Liz Carl, I'm new to town government stuff.
So it, just to add on to what you were explaining, does the, besides having an impact on a potential Act 250 specific development, does the town plan hold legal standing otherwise? Like in a, you know, as you're mentioning, things that are recommendations or should, is there a specific point where that would come into play?
Besides Act 250, there is, to my knowledge, no regulatory power in a town plan. There is significant economic power in a town plan. As you know, as we've, we will hopefully find out soon, a town plan is a really critical tool in the ability for the town to receive allocations of state funds and federal funds. And that's both for municipal grant requests and for private individuals. Let's give a quick example. If a private landowner wanted to do their own project that either enhanced housing as something that was, the town plan indicates is a town goal, they, as a private individual, would be more likely to receive funding. The fire department will be more likely to receive funding as a result of details in the town plan. Historical museum. Individual landowners who want to do conservation of their own land are more likely to get funds from VHCB. And very unlikely to get funding from VHCB if they are not somehow identified in the town plan as being a priority in some way. So I mean, there's a lot of ways that the, the town plan brings economic power. But to answer your direct question, Act 250 is the only way the town has a regulatory effect?
Thank you. I just thought it was important to clarify because it feels like a lot of the comments are, there's concern that there's regulatory power in what the town plan states, which there is for Act 250, but not in a day-to-day operational.
That's right.
Unless something is adopted.
Unless it's implemented by another tool, bylaw ordinance of the select board, generally.
Is that coming from nonprofit to municipal? I see it more, it's equivalent for me of looking at a strategic plan where it's,
It is a strategic plan.
Right. These are our hopes and our dreams and our wants. And that is powerful for grant writing, but it doesn't, whether you actually achieve any of those things is totally up to the people involved in pushing them through and putting the work in. There's no guarantees or real weight to it besides a goal. Okay, that's me muttering, but thank you.
Oh, Mary, has her hand raised?
Mary?
It's, this is Phil Leonard from Hillville Road. I want just in general to commend the commission for a lot of hard work, but even more for trying to be very clear in what you're trying to say. I thought the preamble or sketch for the town plan is, makes a case which I think needs to be paid attention to. And that is that the advantages of planning and having a plan are significant. We lived for a long time in Arizona where the tradition is more in the direction of not planning. it's not a fair comparison in terms of scale and size, but the metropolitan Phoenix area is a good example of what happens when no planning is, is in place or very little planning. And I'd very much like to see Mount Holly grow in some of the ways that you indicate. But I think the most important thing is there are advantages to a plan. And there are definitely advantages to community reflect, communities reflecting on goals, aspirations, and a sense of what they value and cherish and want to preserve. So I hope that this is something that goes forward and helps us all continually reflect on what's valuable to us here and, and make some of that happen. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Phil. Peter?
I couldn't hear all of the comment, I think it was Don, on, on Okemo. First of all, I would say that we're on the front side of Okemo. They're on the backside on over there. But apart from that, that, the west side of Okemo is critical wildlife habitat. That's been designated considerable time previously by the Mont Fish and Wildlife in particular because it's the principal corridor from Green Mountain National Forest, the other side of Route 155. the other side of Route 155 up and then through, I guess it would be Shrewsbury. I'm not quite sure where it goes on the other side of Route 103. But it connects it with the northern piece of Green Mountain National Forest. So there isn't going to be development. I can't conceive of it on the western side of Okemo, wherever the state boundary is. I don't know just where that is. But it's, I don't remember, again, just how far back the state determined the importance of it, not that many years. But at least the, the major part of it is, is not going to be, not going to see development on this side.
Thank you.
Dave Enner, is there any chance that you all could include a glossary of terms which would include your definition of should, would, could, how, whatever, that might be a little bit different, a little different nuance from the dictionary definition? That, that might be more explanatory to the local public? And secondly, is with grants, as far as being on the school board, you live by the grant and you die by the grant in some cases. Because if you get a grant, a lot of times you want to continue that grant ad infinitum, and the money runs out and now it becomes a taxpayer burden. So just be careful of grants.
Are there other terms that you would like to see explained?
The would've, could've, should've thing is really.
David.
David Johnson. So before we get too far away, it's on page 26 that it states, "The Belmont Village Plan, comma, as most recently adopted, comma, is incorporated into this plan by reference." Was it adopted?
No, it turned out it wasn't.
So should that whole thing be deleted or just that it was adopted?
Has finalized or something? Yeah, the select board decided not to, I don't think it was even in question. So this was written, but that's a good catch. So the question is, many of you are aware of the Belmont Village Plan. It was not formally adopted by the select board, I think that's what you're referring to, so.
So that's something that will get fixed.
Yes.
And I know from last night, there was a question about on page 11 where it states the town is legally responsible for maintenance, repair of class four roads. That that was determined to be misleading at best.
I think that's my personal opinion, and the board will talk about this some more at our meeting and thereafter. But I agree, it's misleading at best. The, the case law on it is very confusing and complicated. But the short of the version of this is, in my opinion, and we'll see what the rest of the board thinks at a later date, all of this is probably inappropriate for the recreation section. And it may have more applicability to the transportation section later. And what you'll find in the transportation section later is it says that a policy, we recommend the select board adopt a policy to decide how they want to maintain class four roads. And I think that's what I will recommend we move to. Does that, does that address what you were?
Well, I, I think so. There's a couple other things. I pretty much counted the shall and the shoulds that really indicated doing it. And there's 126. There probably still are a few duplicates I caught some and didn't count them. But that's quite an awful lot.
It's not much more than one page, does it? Or is it?
Yeah. So, and I'll say some of those I agree with, and some of whom I don't, but that's another, its own issue. Almost made like, God, is this, maybe it isn't as good a town as it is if we need to do that many things. And I don't think that's the right indication. This isn't a good place to be. I've lived here all my life. I think there's four of us in this room that have been here all their lives. I don't know if Diane's going to speak on.
Yeah, I will.
What you wrote about the news flash that is part of the chit chat, so that's misled. And that's at the bottom of page 42.
Yeah, Diana Garrel. About three years ago, we incorporated the Mahali Newsflash in with the Mahali Chit Chat for the simple reason that we felt that the news entity should be combined together. And now, as of this last fall, in our annual meeting, we have now incorporated the news flash into being, we're paying a yearly fee for the news flash to have unlimited emails each month because we were limited. And the chit chat is taking care of any financial items that would come up by the news flash. So at this point in time, because of the flood and everything else, we were limited on the amount of emails that we could send out through the news flash. So both entities are under the one umbrella.
And all the fundraising goes through the chit chat?
Everything goes through the chit chat.
Yeah, great. All right, thank you for that. We didn't know that. Can I ask you a question while we're on this subject? Do you agree with? We had to construct a little history and blurb here about the chit chat. Do you agree with it? I tried to scrape it out of old town reports.
Yeah, it started in March of 1974, which this town meeting will be our 50th anniversary. Of continued news, monthly news.
Yeah, do we recognize that it's like one of the oldest in the state or the oldest in the state? I don't know if we say that.
I don't know if it's the oldest, but it is among the oldest continually operating in the state, in town.
That's great. I'm, you know, I think I can speak for all of us. We're happy to incorporate changes to the, the description as you wish. So we just had to come up with something there. But if you want, please let us know if you have something.
Sure.
So if everybody's on page 42 where that was, the next page, 43, right in the middle, it's that here you've used the town shall continue. And by using the word continue, that left a more positive feeling to preserve and when necessary restore essential town records. Finishes it. So sometimes just a little extra around the word should or shall helps it. Page 62, I might give you another example of changing the word. There was something I heard on the radio a couple months ago, and I was reading the prior draft of this, it made me think of it. Sometimes a document like this, while it has a lot of facts, it has a lot more feelings by the writer. It might not have used the actual facts. And I think there are instances of that throughout. But the first line, number eight, night sky, I don't think a dark night sky is essential at all. I think if you dropped the word essential and just said eight, a dark night sky is a part of rural care. Further down, the second bullet point, it says shall, well, you got the dots there, shall be guided by an assessment process. We don't have any assessment process.
I'm, what were you talking about? Sorry, David.
Second bullet.
Second bullet.
Oh, yeah, Act 250 does though. And that's who, in most cases of this plan, again, is, is going to be implementing it.
And on the next page, still under night sky, the second to the last bullet, part astronomical observatories. I don't think we have any of those words need to be in our town plan.
We don't actually know that, do we? We don't actually know that.
There are a lot of amateurs.
There sure are.
We don't have any parts.
Well, I don't think the, using, using it like that, I don't think we're looking for a private person as an establishment, so, which I don't know. Overall, the tone of that whole section, I found kind of disappointing, and I would delete the whole thing. A night sky is of no interest to me.
No, it is. Steven.
Just, I guess to try and follow through, some of the stuff, like for example on page 11 where you're talking about the class four roads, seems to be, I'm going to say, as if it's coming from another document, presumably a state document. And some of the other stuff that you do write seems to be coming from other documents. So if you, I'm not just saying as an example, state ordinance or, yeah, says that, da, 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 as to class four roads, but we are going to, you know, reference the other sec, transportation section where the town is not going to do this, or something along those lines. Because it's, when you put it in, it's as if this is what we're saying. And to me, it just seems you're quoting from someplace else. Minor point.
Which part, Steven, are you talking about is quoted? Because I don't believe any part of the.
Well, it just, where you talk about class four roads.
Yeah.
On the bottom of page 11.
Yeah. It's not forwarded.
Right, I'm not saying it. I'm just saying it appears that it was, came from another document or from a state thing, or.
We were talking about we got to change.
That part that's causing a problem with the select board.
Yes.
And then John said that it's actually being overridden in the transportation section. So you either, my recommendation is you either drop it or say the state recommends, but the town will not. Just, you know, to satisfy the select board if you want to keep that in. That's all I'm saying.
But I think we're going to have further discussion after this meeting about that due to what you just said with the select board meeting the other night.
Right.
Possibly dropping that.
Maybe clarifying it.
Yeah, I mean, will definitely be a discussion even tonight and at our next meeting for how we revise, I mean, I can't tell you just my opinion, but.
It was just a suggestion.
Yeah, I think it's a good one, and we should, we should revise that section to be as clear as possible, even though it's a slightly confusing issue.
The odd fellows does have heat, it's on page 52. It's just that they drain the water in December so they don't have to pay for heat. And they turn the furnace off. If they had to, they could turn it back on. I liked right up on page 55 with the Mechanicsville Aqueduct, but I think you might be able to add that in case of a power failure, that could become a source of water where they've got on, what is it, just above where Lake Street and Church Street come together, where if somebody didn't have a generator, they could get water there if the power was off for a number of days. So part of emergency planning. And then on page 71, it sort of goes back to the thing you were, I was talking about on page 11, where it says 180, the, I'm not quite getting the quote right, I got to go get to it, but like a power generation is out of, if a facility under, has been out of service for more than 180 days will be considered abandoned, and the owner must remove it unless he, she or he can demonstrate to the town that the energy generation will resume at a specific date. So, you know, I would just recommend you put the reference where that came from. Because you're stating, this is what the town says it's going to do. And I'm not sure, and I could be proven wrong, that the town has anything, ordinance or something that says that. So I would suspect it's a rule from the state somewhere. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, energy citing is a really complex one, and I will say that there's only so much we can say in this town plan that the state will even listen to. In order to get real standing with the state, you need what's called an enhanced energy plan. I want to be clear that we are not proposing to do that here. That is quite a lengthy process and a very arduous task. And that, that gives you a considerable say in the, I think it's, what is it, the 248 proceedings, is it 248? I think it is. Before the Public Utilities Commission. So without that enhanced energy plan, it's not worth as much. But, but that's a fair point. I'll try to find out where that came from. I don't really remember offhand. David?
We've got somebody on.
We have somebody, should we go to Zoom real quick? Can we come right back to you? Mary, please.
Actually, sharing screen with Mary is Phil. I don't know if essential is the right word, but I can attest that when folks come up here to visit, the visibility of stars, and I guess that means the dark night sky is something they notice. So I guess I'm rising in defense of the dark night sky, whether essential is the right word or not. I like it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll add that we, we have heard from, I don't know if he's in attendance, but we do have a astrophotographer in town who has at least expressed some interest in these provisions. I don't know if you consider that observatory, but apparently there is quite an active Vermont night sky photography community. And there is something called dark sky tourism that apparently, you know, communities like ours have, have been advised to try to capture a little bit of. We'll go back to David.
So page 79, see future growth, the second paragraph, first line. So the ground, grand list includes 1,201 properties. When you say value, assess would be, assess would be better word there. So the figure's right. And the next little paragraph down, the, you've mixed your apples and oranges there. So the town budget required 1.1 million in taxes. But of that, it's 603,700 are for highways because there is other revenue besides taxes that pay for some of the highway expenses. So that number's lower.
603,700?
Yep.
Okay.
Because the difference between the two was the budgeted revenue per highway. So I knew that was... So it would be 54.9%. Seeing as that's my last budget, I think. And so while we're on that page, down at the bottom, the italicized thing, there was, there's an example where you said the town should consider, a good example of just having the word "consider" there. Makes it more appealing. And I did make a new note that the town should consider adopting a local option tax. That's duplicated on page 77. My note was that was okay to use the word "consider," but no, I'm not in favor of the tax.
Thank you.
I'm assuming that on page 45, the blurb about the Mount Holly rescue is going to be rewritten, since it no longer exists. And I think I spotted just a small typographical error, maybe, on page 16. The third bullet down says the town of Mount Holly owns 6.2 acres. And it says the State Lake Recreation Area, I believe it's supposed to be Star Lake.
Yeah, good one.
Okay, thank you.
He gets extra points.
Is that, is that a Freudian slip? It's like the darn state with that lake, right? Oh, boy.
Well, they want the lake, they just don't want the recreation.
Thank you, that was a good catch.
Just going back to a question, or a point of clarification. If we, first off, in 2024, we have to redo the village designation. Prior to that, we have to have the plan in place? Or is that...
That's correct. I mean, it...
And what happens?
To is, you know, in order to get it approved.
What happens if we don't meet that deadline? Do we just all of a sudden lose the opportunity for grants and other such things? And what else do we lose besides any possible grants?
So that's a good question. So what happens if we don't make it? We will lose the designation. There are probably few property owners taking advantage of the tax credits, but they would lose those for this tax year. We would lose priority status for any new grant applications, including highway. It don't have to be grants that would apply to the village. We get a, the way grants are awarded in Vermont is really a ranking system. They have a spreadsheet. The state loves spreadsheets. And you have a column for every one of these things that you have. And if you get enough of them, you get brownie points, and you get a higher status in their award system. And we lose a big one, unfortunately. And that may mean less money for roads. That may mean less money for other infrastructure. That may mean we don't get housing for seniors. That may mean that we don't get significant cost reimbursements for the Belmont Road culvert that needs replacement. So it's a pretty big deal. So we get a lot of special treatment because we have a village. Even if we don't actually use the village for much else. It's a big plus in the column for...
If I need to follow up, then this may be outside your purview, but what goes into getting a village designation once you have your plan in place?
Well, I'll say one thing, and then I'll maybe even ask Bridget to respond to this, because she's been directly involved with it before. It's much easier to renew it. So it's, as far as I understand it, essentially refile, and you get it renewed. That's how, they want you to have it. But when you lose it, you have to start from scratch. So that's much more lengthy process, and there will be a year gap at minimum, I think. I think they only, I'd have to double check this, but I think they only review applications in the spring.
You said we lose priority back to, I guess we would.
So that's the crunch. It's not really that, you know, I mean, there's other advantages that we're not taking advantage of now, but those are the big ones that I think we would miss immediately, so. Do you want to respond to how hard it is?
Well, David did the original village district designation application with help from a lot of other people. But I think it required, and Peter helped me, if you recall, I think it required an assessment of all the properties in the village, and was a lot of detailed data that had to be generated, and a lot of public hearings and that kind of thing that had to happen. It was, I remember it being arduous. A lot of, a lot of calming influences needed. Alcoholic and otherwise.
Yeah, so Caitlin on Zoom?
Yeah, hi, everyone. I had two notes, one sort of just as a private citizen and one from my perch as the Select Board Clerk. On the, on the private citizen side, it might be worth clarifying or mentioning that in the childcare section, that Mount Holly does not have any full-time childcare options in town for anyone under four. And you do kind of move in that direction in some of the language, but it might be worth putting a finer point on it, because that is presumably a factor when a family is considering, you know, moving full-time to Mount Holly. It only has part-time, you know, Mount Holly School provides part-time preschool for three-year-olds. And even that has varied quite a bit over the last several years, the days and hours of availability. So might be worth just clarifying or elaborating on that a bit. The second item is regarding the section on the website, and the recommendation that it be an official website. I did have a email exchange with an attorney at VLCT regarding our website. And despite the fact that we do, that it's labeled as an unofficial website, the VLCT attorney did point out that we are using, because the municipality owns and maintains and pays for the hosting and the domain registration, and the municipal body, you know, governing body makes updates to the website on a regular basis, that it is effectively kind of from a statutory perspective, it is our official website, just in terms of being the place where we are obligated to post, you know, meeting minutes and meeting warnings and stuff like that. So whether or not it's designated as an official website is probably a bit moot. And that might be too much detail to go into the town plan. But just for your clarification on that, and I'm happy to send the legal advice from VLCT that I received regarding that, if that's helpful.
Well, thank you very much for both of those comments. I'm fully in agreement on both, as a single parent myself. So if you could send the legal advice to the Planning Commission, or to me, that would be great.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, basically what they're saying is like, whether we call it official or unofficial, it doesn't matter. It's like kind of how you use it, more than what you call it. So I will send that language just for your, for your background, and it may shape the way you word the recommendation.
Right. And just from my personal part of you, I happen to agree with that interpretation of statute, that it makes no difference statutorily. I think it's just sort of a little bit embarrassing. I think that's the reason why to get rid of the word on there, because I think people make jokes about it, and it's unnecessary. But, but yeah, I would appreciate seeing the VLCT guidance on that. And we can try to maybe incorporate that somehow.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
If the website is, is active, is supposed to be updated, otherwise it's not supposed to be active. That was my understanding. If it's there, it's supposed to be updated, so should not be used. I have a couple of questions on page 19 and 55. It refers to the Mechanicsville aqueduct, the water system for the village and stuff. So to my knowledge, the water had come down into a couple different directions. One was the back of the cemetery, which feeds down to the Belmont store. Not the, not an aqueduct, their own thing. The other one is across from where the, just below Dodge Road, up in the, there's a bunch of springs up in there that feed that little red building in the ditch on Yuleville Road there. So about four years ago, the foundation had deteriorated to the point where water that was coming in was going down the ditch, as fast as it came in. And I know everybody's pretty much drilled a well, so I'm not sure if there's anybody, it says shall be maintained. I'm not sure if there's anybody, because so many have drilled wells in the last 20 years. I'm not sure if there's anybody on the aqueduct anymore. Something to look into. But I don't think there is anybody, I'm trying to think of the houses, especially if the water's not coming in. It's not running out. That's why the museum had to do something recently in Belmont Church. There was a number of things that had happened. Might be worth looking into.
Thank you. I just want to be a little bit aware of the time here. We'll probably, I think, wrap it up at 7:30. Right, if it's unreasonable to everybody, if we can. So maybe about 10 more minutes. And again, just a reminder, happy to receive your comments and comments from other people in the community that couldn't attend tonight in email or in written form here in the office, so. David?
I'm David Martin. Speaking, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. I'm not speaking for the commission. But going back, since we're getting near the end, I think we've been doing a lot of nitpicking here, you know, looking at words, small, thick changes that you consider making. But I just want to express my thanks for your work and my support for, I think, all of the provisions, the feeling behind them, you know, again. I might have written one word or two words differently, but you guys did a great job of moving us forward, giving us ideas for how we can make the town a better place to live in, both for us as we get older and for future generations. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Bill, a lot of discussion about the April 1st date and how important it is. Could you list in sort of an order of priority, what ultimately has to happen to make that date? How can we affect that?
Without, you know, sort of, Doc, we have a checklist from the state. There's an adoption checklist for a municipal plan. I don't, I haven't memorized all the details, but basically, we will hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, have a final draft that we will approve to be sent to the Select Board. The Select Board will receive that and, at their discretion, schedule a public hearing. And either at or following that public hearing, they may either ask for changes or adopt it. Or ask for changes, which they then hold another, and if the changes are substantial, another public hearing would be required at that point. Which is why it's so helpful to have, you know, more substantial changes now, because we still have another hearing. But if there are substantial changes after the next hearing, then another hearing would have to be scheduled. And after any of those public hearings, the Select Board is free to vote to adopt it, or they may choose not to.
Okay, so if the Select Board chooses not to at the end, then it's done?
Then that's their choice.
Then we miss the date and it goes on.
What's the, is it 30 days for notice of a public hearing? What's the warning, 15, 16?
It's 15 for the hearing. In this case, we had to do 30, because we had to notify adjacent municipalities in advance and give them an opportunity to comment in detail. They have, just so you all know, they have chosen not to. We have received zero. We have received a couple of notes of support. We have received no criticisms or substantial comments in terms of changes, recommended changes, so.
Sounds like there's not a lot of time between now and April 1st.
We've been doing our best to try to...
No, no, I know that, but we have to do our best and participate and make it happen.
All right, is there any more comments on Zoom? We're starting coming down to the end of the time here.
John, is there the feeling, can I, Phil, trying, is there, this is a feeling that it's more important to have the plan than to have a perfect plan? It seems to me, from what I'm hearing, is that we need to go ahead with as good a plan as we can get, rather than try and make a perfect plan. I mean, I think all of the, many of the comments, all of the comments have been important and relevant. But I don't think you'll ever get a plan that's going to satisfy everybody. Everybody, and everybody's going to have something they don't like about it. And so I think it's much more important to have a plan than have a perfect plan. And I hope you can get that through to, not only the people here, but for the general public in the house. I don't know if you agree with that at all.
Well, I think this, a plan will evolve, you know, over time. There would be other opportunities to have new town plans, and I'm sure that it'll be better than this one.
Yeah.
I have no illusions about that.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize your plan. I think, from my point of view, it's spot on. But that's a different question than whether or not it's spot on for everyone, which it really won't be. And I think we need to think of the importance of having a plan, a proof plan, rather than having a plan that's absolutely invested.
Yeah, well, I agree. And we spent, that said, we, I'll come back.
I don't think you, I don't think you went into it with that.
We went, you know, we spent three years trying to get it pretty darn good, at least to sort of understand or somehow find a vision that most people could agree with in terms of especially maintaining our rural lifestyle. But I will say one other thing about that, is the main thing here is that this does sort of get us in the door to have a say at state proceedings, okay? Because after JM Gulf, everything's different. In the old days, we would probably sort of have a say now that we haven't, we're naked, okay? So the idea is...
As of today, we're naked.
As of the, as of JM Gulf decision, right?
I mean, as we sit here today.
We're naked.
That's right. We don't have, in a town without zoning, so no local say whatsoever on decisions. You rely on the state to, and if you don't have the local community's vision or view or any sort of, you know, idea from the local community, then you don't have a lot. The state decides for you.
Ron Hunter, who has his hand up?
Oh, Ron has his hand up? Oh, there he is.
Yeah, I don't know how to press the button to raise my hand, so, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. There's been a lot of comments about the use of the word "shall," but I think Dave Johnson said it best in a certain way. I don't think it's the number of times "shall" is used. It's as David said, he agrees with some, and he doesn't agree with others. So I think, as we read through the plan, let's look at each use of the word "shall." There are places where it's appropriate, and there are places it's not. And that's the way it should be valued, not based on the number of shells.
Okay, thank you. I say, I have one thing on that, is in my opinion, for what it's worth, the number of shells is reflective of the number of topics. So the idea is that our views on every topic be heard. And what I would encourage the community to do is... And what I would encourage the community to do is not look at the number of shells, but look at the substance of the recommendation and see if you agree with it. And as David said, there's some that he agrees with and some he doesn't. But overall, if we can sort of say that these things generally capture the spirit of what we would like to see, and for the most part, I think that's, keep things more or less the same is the general consensus. Keep our rural heritage, keep our rural lifestyle, keep things affordable for us and for the next generation. I think it would be nice to look at the plan in that way and say, will those views be reflected in a state proceeding? And without the word shall, they will not. We can be assured of that. Is that Stephen? Stephen?
I promise it's the last one.
Okay.
Just on page 10, where you talk about Star Lake, I would just recommend that you increase the commentary similar to what you wrote on Lake Nineveh, considering that the issues that Star Lake is having with the mill foil and the lily pads taking over the place. And then it would just reinforce when you go for funding. Yeah, just a suggestion.
Yeah. So let me just understand, so describe the current conditions a little bit more, in a more detailed way?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, you know, it just adds more fodder when you can, I think at least.
Okay.
When you go for grants to try and clean up the place.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was not successfully eradicated.
I promise that's the last one.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on Zoom? Anything else here?
I would say again, thank you to.
Great job.
Email address again? Or can you put it up for sending in comments?
Yeah, so for the, for sending in comments by email, the best way to do it is the address that's on both the agendas and the notice, the planning commission email. And that way, it'll definitely be officially recorded and all that.